Recording in progress.
Thank you very much, and now I will entertain a motion to approve set agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda, consent agenda.
That's just the whole agenda.
The whole agenda, yes, I will.
We've got a motion by Amelia, second, a second by Raoul. All, I'll take any dissent, any, or discussion. All right, I'll take a voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none passes unanimously, we'll move on to item two. Presentations, we do not have any presentations tonight, but we do have some announcements. So we'll move on to item three, council and staff announcements. And I will first turn to our city attorney for, since we just had closed session on two items for any report out.
Yeah, there's nothing to report from the closed session.
Okay, no reportable action, we go, we'll move on to staff. And I'll take staff announcements now, I understand there's going to be several.
Staff members are making their way to the front.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, I'm going to start with an update from the Public Works Department as it relates to harbor seal pupping season. So harbor seal pupping season has concluded and the temporary lattice fencing that has been removed. We're happy to report that more than seventy seal births were observed by the bayonet volunteers at and around Hopkins Beach. This is the highest count in the last five years, making this a really remarkable and successful year. The quiet please signs will remain in place year round at three key locations between Eighth Street and Hopkins. The temporary signage which included sandwich boards and the electronic road signs have been taken down as we previously planned. And we request continued cooperation from the residents and the visitors to keep Hopkins Beach area safe and quiet as the seal pups transition to molting and throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I was here with a reminder for our Pegrobian neighbors that summer reading is a full swing, but it's not too late to sign up. It's a fun way to earn prizes just by reading. And I want to remind you that summer reading isn't just for kids, we all, all ages are welcome, we also have programs for adults and teens. And this year's theme is color our world, celebrating art and creativity in the many ways that they enrich our lives. June and July will be full of fun events and activities, and we hope that our neighbor and our communities will come join us for as many as they can. Please visit our website at Pacific Grove Library dot org to view our calendar for dates, times, and details. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Moving now to recreation update.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Members of the public. I'm Katie, I'm the Recreation Manager, and tonight I have a few brief updates on our summer staff and our summer programming. Starting June 2nd, we held a week-long summer staff training which included a variety of certifications such as DPR and First Aid, mandated reporter, and concussion safety. It included workshops with topics such as developmental milestones for children, behavior management strategies, and how to lead small and large group games, always very key for our counselors. Additionally, it provided specific training for camps, sports, aquatics, for the programming and the safety protocols we keep in place. At the end of the week, we took our new hires, they took their oath of office, and they officially became part of our recreation team. We'd like to say a special thank you to HR, Public Works, Police, Finance, Risk Management, our Deputy City Manager, and the library for helping us with portions of our recruitment and our onboarding, as well as PGUSD who helped us with our recruitment season. After a successful recruitment season train, and training season, we have a full team of six full-time staff members and fifty-five part-time staff members, all working together to manage our summer camps, our sports programs, our aquatics programs, our rec swim, and all the registration that takes place to make those possible, as well as the mini phone calls that we cover as well. I'm also happy to report that after two, oh, we have almost, sorry. I'm happy to report that we've had almost two full weeks of successful summer camps and programs. Here's a brief summary of what we've done. We've had swim lessons for ages six months to nine years, we've had rec swim open on Friday afternoons, Saturday mornings, and Saturday afternoons. We've had a talk camp, an adventure camp, and a soccer camp. We've had golf camps, which was a partnership with PG Golf Links. We've had the ELOP program, which is the partnership with PGUSD. We've had robotics camps, and we've had a dance camp. The total number of campers we served during the first week was two hundred seventy-three, and this week we're currently serving two hundred seventy-six participants. We'd also like to say a special thanks to the PG Library, who has been providing weekly visits for both of our camps, and just puts a nice fun additional piece to our camps, and that's our report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's great to hear some really good numbers there.
So, there we go. Good evening, Mayor, Honorable City Council Chief Dave with Pacific Grove Police Department. It's my honor to and privilege to announce the completion and publication of the PGPD's twenty twenty-four interview report. So, we'll actually, staff will be presenting that to the council on July sixteenth as part of the regular agenda. For members of the council or members of the public who would like to review the interview report, that has, is posted and now available on the department's website as where, as well as our social media platforms such as Facebook. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, we appreciate it. We look forward to that report on July sixteenth.
Hi, Mr. Rogerson.
Yeah, one more announcement, Mr. Mayor, so the city of Monterey has identified in their work plan for this next year to the, the idea of looking at a JPA versus a contract fire model. And I guess that was one of the original ideas when they first went to this contract model. So, the reason I'm bringing this up is in the coming months, we may be bringing an item before you that will be to help fund such a study to see if that would be a model that'll work for the three, for the currently three cities they're involved in this, in this situation. It's nothing that is, anybody has any answers to until you actually would study it and look at it, so again, just wanted to let you know that you might see that in the coming months.
There'd be a JPA for Carmel, PG, and Monterey for fire services instead, instead of the contract model that we're currently in?
That'd be correct, so.
Okay.
A new government structure altogether would be the, the end result, if that were to be the end result, there's a lot of, like I said, studying and things to look at before you get that.
Right, there's a lot to be answered before we can embark on that, and we would have an opportunity here and with the public to parse that out.
Yeah, quite a bit of time.
Okay, all right, thank you very much for that announcement, any further staff announcements? And I think we have a couple council announcements, so who's next, who's up?
I'll go.
Go ahead, Councilmember Raoul.
Um, Saturday was Chalk the Block, and it was, it was incredible. And I think the best part was, we were downtown having dinner on Sunday, and people were going to Colette's, grabbing ice cream, and then going back through and walking the chalk the block and enjoying the art from the kids, so I found that an incredible experience. I also did want to know, because I've, I've been keeping track of our friends at PG&E, there will be a summer heat warning going out, most of it won't affect us, but it will affect our, our friends in Carmel Valley. And so, there may be a situation where they have evacuation plans already, there's five set up community resource centers, so just be aware that, you know, traffic, if something goes sideways, traffic may get bad. There may be more traffic than usual, so just be careful. And also, for those of you in the chamber, there's snacks by the door. Because I don't want to take them home with me.
And they're good too, trust me. Okay, any other council members? Councilmember Walking Stick?
Just like to wish my wife a happy anniversary, it's eighteen years today, and she still makes me grateful every day that she said yes, so, thank you, honey.
Can you, Joe?
Yeah.
Uh, just, Amelia.
I just wanted to mention to you, Raoul, that the Superior Court Judges, Chaps Paduri, myself, and the two gentlemen sitting in the front row were the judges of Chalk the Block.
Oh, that's great. All right, I, I guess that's all the announcements, so we're going to move on to general public comment. General Public Comment must deal with matters subject to the jurisdiction of the city and the council that are not on the regular agenda, and routinely deal with matters that are, oh, I'm sorry, that's the next one. So, Jen, anyone in the chamber is wishing to speak, general public comment, come forward, please, and I'll take chambers first, and then we'll take the online callers. Go ahead. This, this is the chamber.
All right. Hello, everyone, very nice to see y'all. I'm a local Pegrobian, and I'm here today speaking on behalf of the Board of Directors over at the Pacific Grove Art Center. I just wanted to take a quick moment, real quick, just to express how amazing it was to be able to judge this past week's Chalk the Block event alongside Councilman Chaps Paduri and Joe Emilio. It was amazing, and not just because I got to see the talent and creativity we have here on display, but because I got to share in that spirit of community and pride right there on the sidewalk, and it was amazing. But anyhow, speaking of creativity, I wanted to openly and warmly welcome all of you in helping us to celebrate the Pacific Grove Art Center's fifty-sixth birthday on July fourth. So founded in nineteen sixty-nine, the Pacific Grove Art Center has for nearly over half, that, I'm not sure, supported and been a location for the arts here in Pacific Grove. Between exhibits, hands-on classes and workshops, public events, and working studios, it's been a space for residents of all ages, not to work or shop, but to create and inspire and connect with others. So it's one of the last true third spaces in this city. I think it plays a unique role in our civic life. I think it's a hub for creativity, culture, and even education. And it'd be an honor to have you guys all celebrate and the community, not just our history, but the people and the partnerships that make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in chambers wishing to speak, come forward, please. If you're going to speak, then just kind of queue up if you don't mind.
Hi, I'm Kim Bowie, and I'm speaking tonight as the President of the Pacific Grove Public Library Friends and Foundation. I would say half a century ago, a lot of things were going on in Pacific Grove. Our organization just celebrated our fiftieth anniversary last year. And we really want to thank the community and thank all of the donors and volunteers and people who for five decades made it possible for us to support our wonderful library. I also want to note that twenty twenty-five finds libraries and the communities that they serve in very, very challenging times. I think you can be extremely proud of your public library, how welcoming it is, how it serves everyone of all ages and materials. I was there earlier with my three-year-old grandson, and he picked out a Braille book, and we had a conversation about, this is a book you can read if your eyes aren't able to read, your fingers can. And he came home and told my husband how excited he was to find that book. So this is truly a library that serves everyone. We are an organization that exists to support the Pacific Grove Public Library. And I just want to assure the council, the city staff, and the community that we are here to help the library, whether federal actions, other actions against libraries, against the freedom to read, and against the right to know. So we pledge to continue to support, to promote, and advocate for the library, hopefully at least another fifty years. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Come on up.
Hello, everybody, my name's Jamison, and I'm a board member at the Pacific Grove Art Center, and I just want to say like Sam did, it was an honor to be a part of Chalk the Block. Councilmen Chaps and Joe, you guys made it so much fun to be a part of, and you guys were so easy to talk to and get along with. But anyways, I wanted to just share a small story on how the Pacific Grove Art Center has impacted my life and allowed me to be a better person and a better artist. So I grew up, I graduated from Pacific Grove High School. And this last August, I was unfortunately had to leave Pacific Grove, the town I love so much, to have a more stable home and a more, a, a, a better, a, a, other room for my daughter who was born in December. The Art Center has allowed me to come back to the town I love by giving me a place to work and use my, my videography and photography skills to help them present themselves with, with better media, along, along with my creative partner Sam. The Art Center has given us a home to express ourselves and feel like artists, as well as allowed me to come back to Pacific Grove and become more a part of the community than I ever was. Um, a couple months ago, or this time last summer, I was in this building with a carpet cleaning company, cleaning the carpets, and now I'm here speaking in front of you guys at my first city council meeting ever, and that wouldn't be possible without Karen Owen, without Sam, and without the artists that have allowed me to, to better present myself and just overall be a, more involved in the community, and I, I live in Seaside now, so. Also, Karen has welcomed my daughter into the, the Art Center as well, and she's become a, a best friend of everyone there and a, an unofficial mascot of the place. So I just want to encourage you all to please come to the Art Center and learn more about the people involved and look more about the, the artists and their stories, so thank you all for your time, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Good evening, City Council, my name is Karen Owen, I'm the President of the Pacific Grove Art Center. And I'm here to tell you about where we're going with the Art Center. The Art Center was started in nineteen sixty-nine, and it was started by a group of young artists from the larger Monterey Peninsula area. But it wouldn't have happened without what we call our civic mothers and fathers. You'll know the names, Gil, Dyke, Elmarie Dyke, Bud Giles, the people who were established and knew how to get things done, and they helped us when we were young. So three years ago, we So three years ago, we said, it's our turn. I'm sorry for that.
You gotta be, you gotta be a little bit of a.
We said, the art, at the art center, we said, it's time for us to do the same thing that was done for us 56 years ago. So we have improved our board. We have seven new board members, 40 and under. And we have made quite an inroad in attracting new people to Pacific Grove that haven't been here before. I do Sunday City. We're all volunteers, just like you. And I appreciate so much what all of you do. But we decided that we need to do something to keep the art center going because it is such a hub and so many people in Pacific Grove. Thank you very much. And so many people in Pacific Grove come here and share in all the wonderful events we have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, Robin Ashleman, Pacific Grove resident. In March, PG denied a tree removal permit, a rejection for which I paid $240. A Eugenia, non-native invasive, some call it a weed. It came with our purchase in 1972 and has successfully reached the sky. Its girth grows into my fence that blocks the neighbors' light. Annually, it litters their patio and my backyard with purple cherries that drop by the thousands, staining their garden patio and my backyard. My hands, my shoes, my paths. I gather them so they don't inevitably sprout and take over the garden. It's host to a leaf, leaf deforming sap oozing solid. The solution, the city's solution, spray. How's an 83-year-old lady with a compromised mind to spray, spray a 40-ish foot tall tree? For 52 years, we've tended a maybe 100-year-old redwood tree. Native, protected, not a weed, on the Heacock side of our corner lot in the right of way at the intersection of streets named for the Reverends Bentley and Heacock, founding fathers who christened this small community of Pacific Grove for the ocean and the grove of pines that once filled it. Each year PG&E pruned somewhat respectfully around the transformer and the top of the power pole, pole, the redwood embraces until this year. Without warning, for this longtime resident, the week of May 26th, our neighborhood was noisily invaded. Three big trucks, three big chippers, an abundance of chainsaws, vehicles and staff, two tree companies and PG Public Works. The beloved redwood that survived years of wind, drought and various unskilled pruners. It's only pest, by the way, is now half its former self. Tip to toe, in a swiftly climbing bucket, a man waving a chainsaw stripped the tree, my yard and my home of their dignity and privacy. Our 70 by 90-foot parcel has 21 trees, including an iconic Northwok Island pine, a landmark visible from the sea and a heritage oak. All but five were planted by me. I know there's no recourse. My question, why can the city not require the same of the utility company that it does of a property owner? A permit and a standard of best practice. What do you suggest my next step to turn this destruction into something positive for the rest of the community? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Bill Peak and I'm here to speak in opposition of the petition that's being circulated in town. The, the petition would stop council pay raise. A pay raise that would be, is 26 years incoming. This pay raise is from $410 a month to $966 a month, which is equal to what council members get paid in Monterey. People may have heard or read that council have medical benefits. That's simply not true. There are no medical benefits for a council. And if you want to show your support for local government, the support I'm sure would be greatly appreciated. Don't sign the petition. Council has a lot of obligations and it's not always easy. So show your support for a council. Don't sign it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to the online callers now.
Thank you, Mayor. Adam DeBoer.
Good evening. Following on former Mayor Peak's comment, I have a question that I'm hoping the council can answer. I was passing by the referendum table at Grove Market and heard the person there telling someone that the ordinance calls for a 5% annual raise for council members and the mayor on an ongoing basis. I've read the ordinance and I see that 5% per year since the last raise was part of the law governing the ordinance. And I know it's been 26 years since the last raise, but I didn't see any indication that it would carry on beyond this raise. Also, they were mentioning, as the former mayor said, the cost of healthcare. But I looked at the minutes and the ordinance and I thought healthcare for council members was explicitly omitted for later analysis. I'm hoping you can clear this up for me and anyone else who might be listening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'll just turn to the city attorney on this to answer those two questions. There's been Mr. DeBoer raised that there's a 5% ongoing raise and that is not true. I just want to turn to you for those two questions.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance number 25-007. And the ordinance that was adopted did increase the proposed increase of the salary of the council members and, and the mayor. And to address the specific questions that were presented, the ordinance does not provide for any medical benefits for the council or the mayor. And the ordinance also does not have any 5% annual increase.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the question, Mr. DeBoer. Councilmember Raw.
If I can just get one more point of clarification, somebody came up to me on, at an event on Saturday and said the reason that they were mad and that they signed the agreement was because.
Councilmember Raw, I need to interrupt. This, this is an item that is on the agenda. What we are allowed to do is to respond briefly to public comment. And that's what has been done here. We did get two public comments. They asked questions. The mayor asked me to answer them. So I think that that's as far as we can go.
So if somebody wants a clarifying question, they can, they can come to the meeting and ask it, right?
I'm not sure I understood your question.
Well, so the person that came up to me with a question, if they want clarification from the city attorney on that, then they just need to come to the meeting and ask, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to Ms. Domer now.
Thank you, Mayor. Inga Lawrence and German.
Goodness, general public comment has been very interesting tonight. We've had wonderful positive items about chalk the block and the Pacific Grove Art Center. It seems greatly enthused, especially the young people. And then we have heading into the older people, poor Robin Ashleman, my goodness. And here is a prime example of your Topes Tree Service renewed contract that is terribly faulted and how they decimate trees. And I, my heart goes out to her. I'm another senior who is going to bring back, because it's not in the draft minutes, about the mayor's direction to staff to explore ways for low-income senior homeowner option with our mandatory green waste bills. Well, since the mayor didn't define this in the motion, of course, it's not, there's no other mention of it. And I'm afraid it's going to be left by the wayside. And this city gets its garbage collected for free as we low, with property taxpayers pay for that, as well as our own rising individual green waste bills. And we low-income seniors, low usage are paying much more than our fair share of this rising franchise agreement that you all seem to rubber stamp. So I really want that direction from the mayor to staff to start exploring this, to truly be explored. I would appreciate that. And also, as far as the referendum goes, hey, all we people want, we public, is a vote on your salaries and not an immediate you giving yourself a raise. Not even next, every other city has waited, well Monterey certainly did, Monterey to the next election to raise their salaries. You just appropriated it for yourself and you certainly said, we are coming back to look at the medical. And I will clarify that because it's in the minutes, the video of that meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other folks online?
Yes, we have one other caller, Luke Clady.
Yes. Can you hear me, Sandra?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you. I just want to address the council, let, uh, let you know that Bill Peak is, is wrong on all points. And I don't believe he's read either of the mailer, watched the council video from the May 7th and May 24th first meetings or read the press release. I think what he's doing here is simply carrying water for the current mayor and providing disinformation to the public, which is a bit of a shock for a former mayor to be involved with. Um, I mean, I can't say how, you know, how disappointed I am in Bill Peak getting up to the microphone and spreading disinformation. Want to know what this referendum is about? All they have to do is go to our website, transparentpg.org, where they can download our press release that includes links that substantiate all the claims and information that we pass along to the public. And speaking of the public, you know, Mayor Peak can ask people not to sign, but we've, we've already gotten the signatures. So you know, uh, it's, it's, it's a, it's a moot point at this point. And the public has overwhelmingly supported the volunteers that have been there, collecting the signatures, giving the public correct information. And Adam, Mr. DeBoer's comment is just, it's just more disinformation. Nowhere have we claimed that that's actually a 5% increase is going to be carried out. You know, infinitum. It's all on our website. It's all in the mayor. It's all in the mailer, mailer. So both former Mayor Peak and Adam DeBoer are spreading disinformation and you'll have our signatures on July 1st. And if your arrogance continues, I think you're going to see where it ends up. Have a good meeting.
Thank you. Marty Adams.
Thank you. I would just like to address the last speaker who has the nerve to speak about arrogance and disinformation. Mayor Peak and Mr. DeBoer were speaking of conversations they've had with citizens who have spoken with people who are gathering signatures. And that is where the disinformation is coming from. And as far as being transparent, if you go to Transparent PG, there is no information as to who their donors are. So there is no transparency, which there has never been with formal council, councilperson, Clady. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you for that. Any further?
No further hands, Mayor.
We're going to go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the council for consent agenda. The consent agenda deals with routine and non-controversial matters and may include action on resolutions, ordinances or other public hearings for which testimony is not anticipated. So for the consent agenda, I'll ask, are there any council members that wish to pull anything tonight, any on the consent agenda? Seeing none, does anyone in chambers or online wish to pull a consent agenda item? This is your chance.
I see no hands raised online, Mayor.
All right. Seeing none in chambers, we'll go ahead and take vote on the consent agenda. If I can, I'll entertain a motion to approve. With it. Motion by Emilio.
Second it.
Second by Raw. Any discussion? Seeing none, take a voice vote. All in favor, say aye, aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. We'll go ahead and lead right into item 11A. This is the coastal development permit. Staff's ready to, getting ready to go here. I'm assuming we have the applicants online.
I do see Mr. Chiani online as well.
Well, we're going to go forward with the items. So
Okay.
And I do see his hand is raised. Okay, great. So 11A, staff, go ahead and take it away. I'm sorry, before we do that, I'm going to recognize Mr. Pyrick. He wanted to set the procedural groundwork for this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention briefly that the city council policy 000-9 addresses the procedures for public hearings. And those include council providing ex parte communication disclosure, which would be if you had communications with others relating to this matter. If you had individual contacts, then, and you received information, you should disclose that. Secondly, there will be the staff report presented. Third step is for the public hearing to be open. Step four, here we have an appellate, so the appellate should start first. They have 10 minutes to make a presentation on their position. That'll be totaled on the appellate side. And then the applicant would have 10 minutes to speak. And then following that, there's general public comment, excuse me, not general public comment, there's public comment on this item, which is for three minutes. And then there would be rebuttal. The appellate would have five minutes of rebuttal. The applicant would have five minutes of rebuttal. Following that, the public hearing would be closed. Then the council would have a discussion and a decision.
Okay. So we're going to, yeah, we're going to hear from staff. And then we're going to hear from the, the app, the appellants that were following that, yes? Yes. Okay. All right. Well, let's go through it then. We'll do staff first.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Smith and council members. Agenda item 11A involves an appeal of the planning commission's decision on April 10th, 2025, to approve a coastal development permit for the realignment of an approximate 100-foot segment of the shoreline recreation trail. Project site is located within the Ocean View Boulevard right of way, adjacent to Shoreline Park and near the intersection of Esplanade Street and Esplanade Park. The project site is in the coastal zone. This managed retreat repair project would restore a small section of the recreation trail to address a safety and shoreline erosion issue at this location and to maintain coastal access. The shoreline management plan incorporates the need for flexibility to address these types of changing circumstances, such as erosion and public safety. And as proposed, the project is consistent with both the local coastal program and the shoreline management plan. This view shows the area of proposed development. Trail realignment would replace an eroded section of trail to the right of the Red curb. Managed retreat of this section of trail would address the erosion issue at this location in the least environmentally impactful way and would maintain public access and improve the existing substandard safety conditions. and would maintain public access and improve the existing substandard safety conditions on this well traveled trail. All proposed work would occur within the existing right of way. No project work is proposed to occur seaward of the existing trail. And public works would implement best management practices to protect resources in the surrounding area. Additionally, per condition number six, the black oyster protection protocol adopted by the city council would be followed to ensure the protection of nesting black oyster catchers. And the project site is also located in an area designated as the Esplanade Neutral Zone. And the nearest black oyster catcher nesting areas are over five hundred feet away in either direction. And condition number seven, eight would require implementation of traffic and pedestrian safety measures. And conditions of approval are uh, standard practices for conditions of approval to be implemented by staff and the contractor after approval of a coastal development permit. Therefore, staff recommends the city council deny the appeals and approve the coastal development permit subject to the findings, conditions of approval and class one and two categorical exemptions. And this concludes staff's presentation and staff is available for questions.
Okay, so at this time, thank you very much. The city, there's no technical applicant, the city is probably technically the applicant. Ergo, we will open the public hearing, but they've already provided their presentation. And at this time, the appellants will have ten minutes total to speak. Um, and so I will now turn to Mr. Chiani to see how he would like to proceed with the ten minutes.
Hi, this is Lisa Chiani and we're sharing the computer, uh, so, and I'm going to speak first.
Okay, yeah, so you'll have, you'll have ten minutes when you want to begin.
Thank you. The proposed trail realignment into Ocean View Boulevard is an important step in responding to severe trail erosion across from Esplanade Park. Rather than pursuing a misguided earlier plan to build expensive and environmentally damaging seawalls on the scenic rocky shoreline. The coastal commission welcomes moving the trail landward, but also wants to know coastal resources are being protected in this highly sensitive appealable area. Pacific Grove Shoreline Management Plan discusses three failing trail locations in close proximity, which together extend five hundred feet from approximately ten forty-five to eleven nineteen Ocean View. The proposed project partially addresses one of the three areas of severe erosion and disregards the sandbags supporting the edge of the existing trail at the east end. The SMP recommends a coordinated planning effort for the three areas. If it's not possible to carry out a plan for all three areas now, a comprehensive plan is still necessary in order to provide the most cost effective project for the current site and to have the least adverse impact on coastal access along Ocean View and the coastal trail. The SMP provides an analysis of alternatives informed by DUDEX's geologic and hydrologic conditions report with an analysis of coastal erosion and a reading, receding coastline. The SMP anticipates public involvement in the planning, including neighbors. Pacific Grove has had a certified local coastal program and a shoreline management plan for five years. And staff needs to use those documents to plan projects on PG shoreline that require protection of coastal resources and of people accessing the coast on the street, on the trail, or finding parking. PG residents paid nearly three hundred and twenty thousand tax dollars for the shoreline management plan to be used for informed planning. Staff originally planned to exempt the proposed trail realignment from a coastal development permit with public review, regarding it as a simple repair project for a so called existing facility without recognizing the complexity of the coastal issues which are made quite clear in the SMP. Fortunately, the LCP provides for the public to challenge CDP exemptions, allowing coastal commission staff to weigh in if necessary. Coastal staff agreed with our objections to the city's proposed exemption while still appreciating the city's efforts to relocate the trail inland. Unfortunately, staff fails to acknowledge that the project results in an expansion from the existing coastal trail into the street, causing unusual safety issues. A traffic engineer was not engaged to help develop a safe plan and to include measures such as signage for directing vehicles around the sudden extension into Ocean View Boulevard and barriers or plantings to help protect pedestrians in an unusually vulnerable trail location. In the absence of the current unsightly but effective large yellow sandians, bright orange plastic bollards and yellow caution tape, the project plans do not demonstrate that the new project will provide comparable protection for vehicles or people, either during construction or during the life of the project. An acceptable plan should be developed first, followed by an approved permit, not the other way around. Meanwhile, drivers distracted by the spectacular scenery are contending with many more bicycling families and groups since the start of the pandemic and many more e-bikes, electric skateboards and scooters and three wheeled mini cars. With all this activity and now the proposed street narrowing, perhaps a speed limit reduction should be considered. Staff calls the trail realignment feature a bulbout, but bulbouts are meant to reduce the street width for safety at a pedestrian crossing, not to put people in the line of potential traffic. Staff does not consider loss of parking an issue, despite its being a coastal access consideration that needs to be mitigated where possible. And they don't even, don't include even standard inadvertent discovery language for tribal and archaeological resources despite the excavation involved. Being previously disturbed does not rule out discovery. The planning commission attempted to address the lack of safety provisions by adding conditions of approval for pedestrian safety and access during construction and for traffic safety measures. But those conditions are not sufficiently defined or drawn up for this novel situation and the specifications need to be on the plans, not left up to the contractor. Please do not approve the current project. It needs much better planning, expertise and public involvement. Thank you.
So this is Tony Chiani, if I can continue on.
Yes, of course, go ahead.
I appeal to CDP to advocate for a comprehensive plan with adequate studies to carry out the recommendations of the LCP shoreline management plan. I sent you a letter outlining the substantial issues associated with the merits of the project and the CDP process to prove it. The staff report summarized a few LCP land use policies that apply to the proposed project and informs the city council, you quote, "The rec requirements of these CDP conditions would be prepared and implemented by the selected contractor during construction," end of quote. Wow. Can the council delegate its decision making responsibilities to a contractor? I believe the proposed process is inadequate and does not comply with the municipal code. Regarding the merits of the project first, the CDP indicates that the project is replacing work that was done without a coastal permit or a building permit or a public works permit. How does the CDP address the fact that it's replacing unpermitted development? This is a Band-Aid replacing another Band-Aid. Second, the design does not address the following potential public safety hazards during the construction and after completion. One, there is a need for an adequate visibility buffer between the cars and bicycles and each end of the alignment. Two, there is a need to feather the westbound automobile travel lane from Otter Point to the so called bulbout. There is a need to protect pedestrians from the risk of falling, such as the city has done in a similarly hazardous location at the east end of Seabalm with a wood fence and wood posts. Four, there's a need to address ADA requirements during construction and after completion. Five, there's a need to limit the construction to a specific time of the year. There may be a need to address pedestrians crossing between Esplanade Park and this quote bulbout to the recreation trail. There's a need to address known flooding hazards in the roadway. Finally, I also suggest incorporating a safe five foot wide trail walkway and boardwalk on the seaward side of Ocean View Boulevard, immediately adjacent to the street, similar to the walkway and boardwalk between Acropolis and Cressby Pond. In conclusion, I'm advocating for a comprehensive and a competent plan with adequate environmental studies consistent with the shoreline management plan and the LCP to realign the trail to be out of danger. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we'll take it out to the public for public comment. Anyone in chambers wishing to comment on this appeal? Seeing none, anyone online wishing to comment on the appeal?
Uh, yes, I do have one, uh, two hands raised. Let's see, uh, Leila Sandell.
And they'll have three minutes instead of ten. Thank you.
Leila Sandell. They probably don't know how to raise their hand.
Let's go to Ms. Doymer and see if she can figure it out while we go to.
Some time there.
Thank you. Unfortunately, here we are again. Public Works pushes forward with a project, a piecemeal project, doesn't specify, doesn't feel it needs to specify and doesn't think it really needs to follow our true LCP shoreline management plan. We, it is truly as, as Tony and Lisa Chiani said, it's a Band-Aid on top of another Band-Aid. I mean, the coastal commission said you need to re, really look at this again. And supposedly they did, and they leave it all up to the developer, not developer, well contractor, if and when they're hired and to do a small section of what needs to be done, which is in our adopted shoreline management plan. I just don't understand why Pacific Grove does not or, or continues to balk at following procedures. Legal procedures put in place that are necessary for our environment and our shoreline protection. We spend this money to do these things and then we're going to do a piecemeal. Ballabout? My goodness. You know what a ballabout is and this it is certainly not a ballabout. And it's certainly encroaching on, on vehicles and other access. So really, this needs a rethink. It really, and specification to it. It needs more than what I'm, unfortunately, Public Works is giving it. Thank you very much.
You missed Doymer. Uh, Madam Clerk, is there anyone else besides Ms. Sandell?
No. I do have.
First.
Anthony Tressel, I thought I saw his hand up.
There's one, it says, oh, okay. All right, we'll try her again then.
Anthony, Anthony Tressel.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Tressel.
Yeah, hi, Anthony Tressel, representing Surf Rider Foundation. I actually want to commend the city for actually implementing shoreline retreat. I won't speak to the details of the project so much. I read through both the reports and the appellants arguments and, and I think, you know, I wouldn't necessarily do it the same way, but I think uh, it's doing what needs to be done. You can call it a Band-Aid, but anything you do uh, with respect to protecting the coast is a Band-Aid, the, the sea is going to win in the end. But I think uh, what it's doing is going to accomplish the aim. And I think uh, it's really good that the city's actually following a retreat instead of trying to build a seawall or something like that. So in general, I, I think Surf Rider would be in support of this project. So, thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll try one more time with Ms. Sandell, but if we can't get sound, we're going to close public comment.
Okay, Leila Sandell, you'll need to unmute yourself. Leila Sandell.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for your patience. Um, my husband and I live at one, 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 five Ocean View Boulevard. Um, and we are continually seeing the erosion right in front of our house of the stretch that is in discussion tonight. We understand that the, the repairs that are needed because the, the coastal trail is so very small there and it is dangerous for people to be walking along there. But we do have to agree with Siani regarding the comments that they had made that a bigger picture plan really needs to be implemented, discussed with the residents and eventually implemented as opposed to a, a piecemeal solution. There is quite a lot of traffic that crosses from Esplanade Park across Ocean View Boulevard to, to begin or to continue uh, walks along the ocean. Um, and there are, there are quite a few people that are crossing over right in that space. So um, I'm not sure exactly how the repair or the proposed repair would look or how it would be, you know, protected. But um, the bigger picture really does need to be addressed. We continue to see the erosion right in front of our house and are very worried about it, quite frankly, that um, some kind of reinforcement is not um, immediately uh, being discussed. So I, I think, you know, a bigger picture is, is needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead and close public comment. And we will now turn to the city for any rebuttal comments relating to the applicant's presentation. I mean, the appellant's presentation. Do you have any comments? You have five minutes if you like.
No, Mayor Smith, staff has no comments at this time. However, I believe Mr. Go, the public works director, may have some comments. CDP staff has no comments.
Gotcha. Okay, we'll go ahead and turn to Mr. Go. Go ahead and start the timer.
Very good. Thank you, your honor, members of the city council. And really quick, um, I won't need the whole five minutes, but I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight via Zoom. I've been out of the office, but had the ability to log on to this item and um, the chance that there's any questions for public works pertaining to this project. This project was before the city council as part of their CIP allocated out through the budgets. The first step was to design, engineer and ultimately permit the project with now the next fiscal year, twenty five, twenty six budget being approved. Then money's been allocated out for ultimately the construct. This project's been before the, the city council before. We've come up with the solution. Um, this is a safety issue. We have a temporary walkway where people that are using the rec trail need to step down onto a curb, onto the roadway and then step back up into the trail from, uh, going up another curb. We can't sustain that. We need to build this infrastructure so we have a continuous trail. We understand the conditions that were set forth at the planning commission in April. The planning commission voted unanimously to grant us the CDP with one member of being absent, a six, zero vote. And as I specified, public works will ensure that all the conditions on the CDP permit that was granted by the planning commission will be carried out and upheld in conjunction with our contractor that we have not even selected yet. So that would be the responsibility of public works to ensure that all of those permit conditions are being upheld. I'm available for any questions and we look forward to building this project and making this trail continuous throughout from basically Point Pino's Trail all the way to Lover's Point. Thank you very much.
Mayor, could I ask a question of Mr. Go?
Sure.
Yeah, um, Mr. Go, would you be able to speak briefly to the pedestrian safety impacts that this project would have?
Well, I'm, I'm concerned right now, we put up the temporary infrastructure because in our observations, not only mine, but our engineering department, which was our. in our observations, not only mine, but our engineering department, which was our civil engineer and our traffic engineer. You heard that our traffic engineer had not been involved with this project, which is not true. They have been tremendously involved with this project. We were concerned. We're watching pedestrians step off the trail into the roadway and instantly have conflicts with vehicle and pedestrian traffic. Hence why we put up the barrels and the twenty-four inch delineators to try to alert members or to alert vehicle and bicycle traffic that pedestrians are stepping into the roadway. By us building this infrastructure, this curb, this five-foot trail, we would now be eliminating that pedestrian vehicle bicycle conflict. One of the conditions of the Planning Commission was to put, um, alerts for drivers and bicycles that this ball bout, that they're approaching it. We will be putting up those delineators. We'll put road markings on the roadway. Um, this would be a great opportunity for us to add some class-three bike sharos at this location to alert drivers that they'll also be sharing the road with bicycles. So we have this opportunity now to enhance this location, slow down traffic and make this much safer for pedestrians.
Thank you very much. And now I'll turn to, uh, the appellant for server rebuttal. You'll have up, up to, up to five minutes. Miss the Chianis, if you wish to have server rebuttal on this.
Thank you. Um, I'll, I'll just start, uh, by saying this is largely a public safety issue and also coastal access issue. Um, the eight and a half by eleven plan shows no safety measures that are comparable to the safety that's provided right now by those, um, big yellow, uh, tra- sand bins and, and the yellow, uh, excuse me, bright orange. I, I can't come up with a name right now. Anyway, the posts and the, the, uh, yellow caution tape. Um, but those are unsightly and they cannot continue in the, um, uh, this gorgeous scenic area. There needs to be something safer. Right now, people, uh, before this, this, uh, temporary measure, people were walking in the street, but at least they knew they were taking, it, they were at risk and they could look over their shoulder. If you build something that sticks out into the traffic and, and doesn't provide any safety, you know, no signs, no, uh, no road markings.
Visibility.
Uh, 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 the visibility, uh, uh, for cars to see the pedestrians is not, is not, um, protected. Um, so I'll, I'll, I'll let my husband continue.
Thank you. I just want to call the attention of the City Council that in November sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, the city's traffic engineer, William Silva, sent a memorandum to Mr. Go stating us, a bulb out, trail alignment in the street would absolutely be unsafe. Um, so I think there's a conflict there. Would the council tolerate a private developer getting a permit with this, with the LCP requirements delegated to the contractor? Or to the owner, in this case, the owner being, um, I think a conflicted, uh, Public Works Director. Um, I don't think so. So I think there needs to be more study. That's all we're asking for, I believe, is that there be a comprehensive study that would, uh, in, include a comprehensive plan that's competent. You notice the plan on your plan sheet, there are no dimensions on the plan view. There's some dimensions on the cross section. Why are there no dimensions? I don't, I'm just stunned by that.
I just did want to also say, um, that the traffic engineer was not mentioned, uh, to, to the, uh, Planning Commission. They brought that up. Uh, there's no pla- traffic engineer involved in the plans that are part of this permit. Uh, the, uh, only mention of a traffic engineer is when planning commissioners asked for additional con- uh, conditions of approval and, um, and that's when they thought a, a traffic engineer should be consulted, but a traffic engineer should be responsible for the solutions.
Thank you.
Does that conclude your remarks?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And, um, I'm now going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for action. Uh, Mayor, did you set the timer off? Excuse me, Mayor, did, did Mr. City Attorney, would you like to be here?
I have something to say.
Okay.
Um, so trying to get that out. Uh, I was, uh, wondering if, uh, Mr. Go, uh, might want to respond to the reference that we heard to this memorandum from William Silva uh, of November thirtieth of two thousand and sixteen, what, uh, we heard, uh, a reference made to earlier.
And what would be the purpose of that to?
Well, there was a reference that was made in the, um, appellants' argument a few minutes ago about this memorandum.
Well, it's, it's very old, so I'll ask the, I'll ask the Public Works Director if he recalls this memorandum and if it has any relevance to the appeal.
Uh, me- members of the City Council, I don't, I, I haven't had an opportunity to review that. Um, in two thousand and sixteen, I think that that was taken out of content because that was prior to us developing the shoreline management plan. And that was being reviewed. That was drafted in time when we were reviewing other options at this location and we were considering armory in this location to stop the erosion efforts. Had nothing to do with the current plan that's before the City Council, which our current traffic engineer had been involved with.
Okay.
Very much.
Mr. Mokinson, do you have anything to add?
No, Mr. Mayor, I think he summed up the same thing that I was just told by CD staff.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So now we're here with the council for action on this appeal. And who would like to kick it off? Councilmember Garfield.
I have a couple of things. So this is an area that I walk all the time and I walked it again today and stopped and talked to some runners that run it every day and some, uh, walkers that walk it every day. And so they're pleased to note that there would be, uh, greater security for people walking or running along the area. Um, there are of course concerns that bicyclists are not as hmm, sharing minded as they would like. And so I think the, the signage and, um, uh, structuring of the roadway to acknowledge the shared roadway. It will be an important part of this project, um, for safety. I did see a, a, a need, at one point thought, well, gee, you know, we got these big bollards there. Why don't we just leave them? Well, that, the continuous pathway allows people with mobility issues to continue to walk. And the way it is now, you have to step down on a curb and then back up on a curb. So anybody with wheels, walker, um, uncertain footing would really have a problem with leaving it the way it is. Um, the other thing that it would do is, uh, and people have talked about that this is a small project and there needs to be a really large project. This is a very different spot than the, the, the piece, pieces of the also eroding um, trail and surface area that are to either side. This is an area that's got about a foot of DG to walk on right now. There is no way without this change that people would be safe continuing and especially if they're going in opposite directions and have to step around each other. Next to it, where people are talking about this being piecemeal, those are different issues. The, the, the structure of the pathway to the west, no, to the east, um, yep, there's erosion. We've just relocated the trail recently um, because of erosion. Um, so that's a fix for that and it's a very different structure. It does not lend itself well to the same solutions along the entire way. I think it's important to take the best solution possible for each of the areas as needed. Um, and so I support this. I have questions about safety. I think it would be great if we have better markers, bollards, something on, on the roadway because it will be tricky, but it's much worse now than, than it will be with a solution in place. So, um, I understand the issues that have been brought up by the Chianis about the piecemeal nature of this. I think I've addressed that and my concerns that you need to address each stretch of this pathway with what is needed at the time for the best solution for safety. Um, the second thing we've heard is, would you turn this over to, um, a contractor? And we've heard that Public Works will be supervising and I, I'm not going to micromanage how a contractor lays cement. Um, that's their job and we have staff in place to make sure they do their job well. Um, the other pieces I'm hearing that I would like to address, um, is um, that yes, this is an intrusion into the roadway. It definitely is. So are people walking both directions and bikes. And so we have concerns about people being in the roadway already. I, I appreciate the effort that's gone into this and I think that, um, I would support moving this forward.
Thank you. Um, anyone else wishing to speak or, uh, Councilmember?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to ask Public Works, I mean, this doesn't, you know, although we can say that this solution may be temporary, but it doesn't preclude us from looking at the rest of the pathway moving forward if the need arise and coming up with a comprehensive solution. But this seems to be the fastest way to deal with a sec- with a, a safety issue for pedestrians. Um, and I just, I, I'm looking at this and I'm seeing, you know, a couple of bites of the apple here with the, with the Planning Commission voting six, zero, one. Um, I mean, I think this thing's been vetted through significantly and, um, I would be in favor of the project. I think ultimately it's going to be, uh, Mr. Go and uh, the community development, uh, group that will have to, uh, be held accountable for the, for the execution of this agreement with the contractor. But as it stands today, it is unsafe. We need to make it safe. And if this is the best way to do it in a timely, budget-friendly way, then, uh, I'm for it.
Thank you very much. And I'll just share that I agree with my colleagues that have spoken so far. Um, it's the confluence of biking, walking, running and driving, all of that one when you step up onto the street. I just know that from personal experience. Um, so I'm supporting the recommendation tonight. Councilmember McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, um, I think there are very good points brought up and, and, um, in the appeal that I, I reached out to the city manager. And so I appreciate the responses on that because, sorry, not talking close enough. Um, so, um, I reached out to the city manager with some of the questions regarding the appeal. And one of the first questions was, um, in an ideal world, I would agree, we definitely want to have the full plan done. And I think we still need to proceed with getting the full plan. We need to figure out what we're going to do because we know that planned retreat will become necessary and we need to be planning ahead for how that happens. So as sections start to fail, we have plans in place. Um, and maybe we could even design something where we are indeed doing that in a phased approach, if that makes more sense or all at once, if we can get grants maybe to do that, um, due to the need to do that. But, but the challenge that we seem to be faced with now is we currently have a dangerous situation. Um, so, so we do need to remedy the dangerous situation. So one of the questions I had asked is, um, what it would take to, uh, would there be any cost savings in doing the full five hundred feet versus just the one hundred? Um, and the challenge we have there is it would delay it for a substantial amount of time and have a very high cost just to get that plan, um, basically approved, to go through the process, to work on getting a plan approved. And that wouldn't address the immediate safety issue. Um, and I think that one of the things I also appreciate is, as one or two of the speakers mentioned, I think the appellant and a speaker might have mentioned that they're, um, doing the planned retreat versus trying to shore up the coastline, which would have more environmental impact. So one of the questions I have for, um, maybe it's for the city attorney, maybe it's for staff is, um, so one of the points of the appeal was that we don't have the plans drawn out for us. And do we need the full plan already drawn out in the findings for us to be able to approve the plan? Or can we approve it with the condition that staff will indeed honor the Black Oyster Catcher MOU for those protections and safety in reliance with the traffic engineer?
I think the resolution that's before you is sufficient to cover those issues.
Okay, thank you. And, um, the other question I have that was kind of brought up from the, the comments that we've heard so far is, uh, so yes, the trail will now extend out into what's thought of as the road. But technically, and I may be wrong on this, and this is why I want to clarify. My understanding is it will expand into the part of the road that is technically the parking section of the road, although there's often not cars parked there, so people use a nice wide lane. But technically speaking, my understanding, it is, is it is, is only into the parking section and not encroaching on the actual lane of traffic movement?
Councilmember McDonald will be happy to answer that. And yes, that is correct. This would be the parking lane that we would be encroaching upon it and not the vehicle travel lane or the bicycle travel lane.
Okay. And I don't know if there's a good way to delineate that because it's really easy when nobody's parked there to just treat it like a really wide lane, which also encourages speeding. So one of the things we're talking about in other parts of the city are traffic calming measures such as narrowing lanes. So I don't know if it makes sense to separate off the parking lane so that then becomes smoothly in line. And that would be obviously paint striping, um, so that it's more clear that that is a parking lane and not a driving li- lane because then it's not like traffic would be potentially coming up on the pedestrian, the, the extension of the pedestrian trail and thinking it's in the lane of traffic. It would be more obvious that that is in the actual parking lane and not in the lane of traffic. So that might be an easy way. Plus the sharos, I like that term for sharing, um, with the bicycles because if they know there could be bikes in the trail. What happens now, because I'm on that stretch of road almost every day also is there's parked cars and the, the bikes kind of go in and out. People, even though there is a trail walk, it's, 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 it's a very narrow trail and not highly accessible. But it seems like moving the trail in might help us reduce some of the additional erosion. Um, am I correct in thinking that if we, if we kind of get people up into this portion, it may then help eliminate some of the adri- additional erosion that's continuing to occur from people may, maybe being in those? Or will it not impact? Um, it's not a hundred percent clear from the plan set how much of that will divert off of the failing section of trail and how we'll protect people from that failing section of trail.
Councilmember McDonald, I, I'm not sure how much this project will reduce additional erosion. I think that's happening from the sea upwards. There's not much trail there anyways. So what this is going to do is just add, uh, trail adjacent to the roadway that is going to now be continuous.
I don't think that answers. Um, so basically it'll kind of pull people off the trail a little sooner and bring them away from the part where it's actually failing on the cliffside. Is that correct?
Well, it's going to expand that portion of the trail. So now they're not, one, bouncing down into the roadway or trying to ver- traverse a less than one foot section of trail, a, a top of curb and gutter.
Hmm.
I don't think it's doing, I don't think that people being on the existing trail or the trail that we're going to be constructing would aid or eliminate any potential erosion. I think that that's occurring regardless. I think that this is a measure that we're putting in place to somewhat retreat, but still have a continuous walking path that's accessible by all where they don't have to step down into the roadway and then step back up. Um, I have numerous ways that we can ensure that vehicles, bicycles, pedestrians know that they're approaching this infrastructure that we're going to be building. And we will be putting that in prior to us opening up. that we're going to be building. And we will be putting that in prior to us opening up this section of trail with new delineators, road stripings, and markings.
Okay, thanks for that. And I think the the main point I was trying to get at is I think that by doing this, it will maybe take people away from the part of the trail that's most in the process of failure right now by moving them into the road and kind of circumventing that around that. So it seems to me like it could be beneficial for helping environmentally prevent some additional erosion, I'm hoping. And yeah, I understand the point that often we're not approving something that we haven't seen a full plan set with measurements yet. But I'm, that is something that the city will be working on with a traffic engineer. That is correct, right? Okay.
Okay, I'm good. Councilmember?
Yes, I just had a couple of points to make. One is, I wanted to ask the staff whether after, so I'm supportive of this, after we, if this goes through, the, will the staff bring something back to council related to the designs or anything like that? Or is this it?
I do not anticipate to bring anything else back. The permit, the coastal development permit has the conditions that are noted on there that we need to implement during construction and post construction. And then the plan set that is before you tonight is suitable for me to obtain quotes. This project might come to the city within the city manager's spending authorities. So we may not even need to put out a request for proposals. I can get, simply get quotes, decode, and then implement the construction. The plan set that is before you tonight is suitable for a contractor to build the improvements.
Okay, and that is helpful. And I just wanted to mention that noting that I was not there for most of the proceedings here, I'm going to abstain from voting. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I'll go to Councilmember Emilio. And I just want to point out that I don't, that hasn't really been said clearly, but there is, there's a document in our, a plan in our thingy. So it kind of could have got away from some people, but we do have one. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've looked at this plan, and I've heard the Chiani speak and Mr. Go and all. I'm agreeing with the city on this. And because of some different reasons, it's already talked about the safety issue. There's no doubt about it. That path, people just jump off the on the, on the straight side, because it's very, very narrow. The other thing is, is that we have to consider that we're kicking off summer here, and we're going to have an increase of citizens, Pacific Grove citizens, and including tourists that are going to be going through that trail, because we have a beautiful pink carpet there. And I think it's important that we continue to support the city on this, because this has to be done. It's been talked about since March. And we did approve it on Capital Improvement Project also. And I am for the staff recommendation to deny the appeal.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Oh, wait.
You can talk, no, you can talk, you can still discuss after we have a motion. Would you like to make a motion?
Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion to that staff recommends the city council deny the appeal and coastal permit, development permit, CDP twenty five dash zero zero three, subject to the findings, recommend conditions and secret class one and two categorical exemptions.
Mayor Manny?
Yep.
And I recommend you include in the motion that it would include adoption of the draft resolution that's in the, attached to the staff report, agenda report.
Can you say that again? And I'll have Mr. Councilmember Emilio or Mayor Porton Emilio adopt that.
Yes, just add to the motion that you also are recommending or moving to approve the draft resolution that is attached to the agenda report.
Do you so move?
I so move on that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Barrett?
Thank you. I have a second from my group. Discussion on the motion. I'll go to Councilman Walking Stick. I apologize. Apologize. Just was, we were just spinning wheels.
I know we were getting rolling there. But yeah, I'm not going to put up too much of a fight because I actually agree with the motion. But I wanted to address a few things. First of all, I have tremendous respect for for the Chianis and their devotion to public safety, to the environment, to public well-being. They're involved in almost every meeting, and they know more about what's going on in this town than maybe any other living person here. However, I've had the benefit of being, being there since the, the planning commission meeting when they were discussing the, the permit. And most of everything that's been brought up was brought up then and was and was discussed. I don't feel that this is piecemeal. We're not looking at a much larger project that of which this is a piece, right? We're doing what we can afford within, to address a safety need that's been present for far too long. And we've got two options with what to do with that. We can bring the trail into the already developed street area, or we can push it out into the natural coastal area that's already fighting erosion. And it seems like the only way we could really maintain that trail there is with the coastal wall, which doesn't seem like a preferential solution to me. So with those two ways forward, and that's what we're looking at, this seems to be the preferential way. The one question I would have for Director Go, would, well, actually, maybe two. But the first one is, what pedestrian safety precautions can we have during construction? Like diverting pedestrian traffic? How are we going to handle that?
We're going to have to set up with delineators, cones. First off, set up no parking on the southern side of Ocean View Boulevard. And then we're going to have to shift travel lanes. And when we shift those travel lanes, we're going to also have to set up a pedestrian walkway that's going to be set up with cones, delineators, barricades, so on and so forth. I'll work with our contractors. We have those water barricades that I'd be willing to bring out there. We could fill them up, and we could put them on the oncoming side of traffic. So it would be the westbound lane of Ocean View to protect, protect the pedestrians even more as they're going to be out into that walkway. So that's what we're going to have to do. We're going to have to shift the travel lanes, put up no parking in the area so I can shift those travel lanes, and then create a pedestrian walkway. I'm well aware that the pedestrians are still going to be going through that area. We can't just divert them around the construction. So we'll put up temporary travel lanes. And we'll determine during construction whether we take those down every night, or if we leave them up in place, depending on where we are at the time of construction.
Okay. And construction was, if memory serves, was expected to last not more than a couple of weeks. Is that correct?
That's what I'm anticipating. This is a pretty simple project. It's basically cutting out some asphalt, forming up curb and gutter, pouring curb and gutter, and then bringing in the DG and setting that back on top of that curb and gutter that was just poured and implemented.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Director Go. The last point was on wanting a more comprehensive plan. That I would expect to be part of the climate adaptation plan. This isn't just the, our coastal management plan. This is going to be a more far-reaching plan that that is more specific to our city and community needs, to moving infrastructure and addressing those sorts of things. And especially addressing coastal erosion and not just measures, but what our overall strategy is going to be. So I wanted the public to be aware that that is in progress. That's, that is moving forward. We're not there yet, obviously, but the need for a larger plan's already been recognized. It's in motion. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Further discussion with Councilmember McDonald.
Thank you. And the other question I hadn't gotten a chance to ask yet was, one of the things brought up in the appeal was the flooding that often happens there. And so just wanted to clarify that the plan here wouldn't further contribute to that. From my recollection, it doesn't tend to pool on this side of the road during, it's usually more over on the Esplanade Park side where we have the flooding. So just if we could confirm that so it's on the record.
That is correct. The flooding that occurs at that section of Ocean View Boulevard is primarily on the Esplanade Park side. We do not have any storm drain infrastructure over there. We know it's a known area, and we properly sign it when we have rains that would pool and create that type of hazard. By building this project has no impact upon that or that flooding in those locations.
Okay, thanks very much. And I presume this is going to happen really quickly because my thought was the same. With summer coming up, we want to have it repaired before we have some of the heavier foot traffic. And in some ways, this might actually, especially over what's happening now, give a safer opportunity for people to continue on the trail. And then adding the sharos, I think, will improve the bike safety. So it seems like the route we need to go now with the understanding that we are working on the bigger plan as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead and go to a roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Porton Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmember Garfield?
Aye.
Councilmembers Rowell?
Aye.
Pedary?
I'm upstanding.
Oh, thank you. Sorry. Walking Stick?
Aye.
McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, thank you.
Motion carries six zero one of standing.
Everyone, appreciate the work on this. You guys did, staff did a lot of work on this one. So we appreciate it. Think it's going to lead to a safer place right there where everything kind of comes together. So, and now we will turn to item 11B. This is the first reading of an amendment to cannabis licensing ordinance. And I will turn to my colleague, Matt Mogenson, city manager. Are you ready to go?
We are ready, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Presentation is coming up. But so the item before you tonight is the culmination of, I understand, years of work here at the city regarding cannabis. Actually, we will have one more step. But but tonight is to consider the licensing rules and regulations that have been adopted. So first slide, please. So to just take us back to a quick road of history. So the voters approved measures M and N on November 8, 2022. And Measure M was an advisory measure that basically asked the question of should retail sales of medical and recreational cannabis at one location within the city be be able to be allowed as long as within, further than 1,000 feet from licensed daycare, preschools, youth centers, or schools. And then Measure N established our six, a 6% tax on cannabis businesses on their grocery receipts. Next slide. On December 6, 2023, the council approved two ordinances that kind of brought those two measures into effect. The first ordinance established the business zoning regulations. And the second ordinance, ordinance established the cannabis business licensing regulations. So within the, the second ordinance that we just cited is, is Pacific Grove Municipal Code 11.100. And that established the regulations for permitting businesses. But within there, it also cited that the city council will establish by resolution the rules and the, in the policies and procedures that will actually be used to permit businesses. So tonight, we're here to present to you a draft of those rules. And in addition, on December 18, the city council authorized staff to go out and work with HDL, who is a kind of a leader in this industry when it comes to permitting cannabis businesses, to assist us with this process. So they have helped us to develop these rules that we're going to preview for you. And they will also help us through the actual permitting process and the inspection services as we go forward. So the procedures and guidelines that are attached to the, will be attached to the resolution that are considered for approval, is broken down into three phases. So the way this will work is that in phase one, we will open a 30-day period. All applicants who wish to apply for the program will have 30 days to come and submit their package. And the package will be clearly spelled out for them. So the first phase is just staff receiving those application packages and going down a checklist. Are they hitting? Do they have the components that they need? Once we receive that, that'll be transmitted to HDL. And HDL will do a deep dive review of each of the packages. And they will look at their business plan, their labor plan, neighborhood compatibility plan, and location and security plan. And they'll determine whether or not they meet all of the state requirements, and whether or not they need all of our code requirements that they'll need to. So applicants that meet those standards, they will get, they will get the opportunity to to correct any minor issues if they, if they don't hit every mark there the first time. But within this, this time period of review, they will get one opportunity for that. HDL will then transmit to the city a list of businesses that meet all of the requirements. Those are the eligible applications. From there, we will, we will conduct a public drawing of all the businesses that are, that are all qualified to operate a cannabis business within the city based on, again, their ability to meet all of those plans, meet state laws, meet our local zoning requirements, and prove that they can successfully operate a business. So whoever wins that lottery will be the provisional license awardee. And from that point, they'll have one year to go, to come back to the Community Development Department and to obtain a CUP. So and that CUP will be like our typical, sorry, use permits, in which you submit, you know, application package, which includes, you know, site plans, floor plans, operation plans. And ultimately, then, we put the next slide. I'm not sure if I go over to that. So ultimately, though, the Planning Commission will be the ones that award the final condition of use permit. And then once that a condition of use permit is awarded, that will be considered the license that will be good for a year. From that standpoint, from that point, then the awardee who has all their approvals in place will go forward with building permits and tenant improvements and all that stuff. So it kind of takes on a regular business kind of practice at that point. So in order to, to approve those rules and regulations that I just highlighted, we do need to do a couple of minor amendments for consistency with the ordinance that's already been approved. So a couple of the changes that we're looking to make to that ordinance to make it again consistent with the rules that we've put together, is we're going to shorten the application period from 60 days to 30 days. If you have, that's enough time for somebody to submit their application package. The location of the proposed business is now a requirement to be identified. And there's reason, the reasons for that is that it's really difficult to judge whether the business is meeting the requirements of neighborhood compatibility, or their security plans, if they don't have a location identified. So we feel that that's, that's going to be a necessary step. The lottery is also not something that's currently spelled out in our ordinance. But again, working with HDL has worked with, I forget the exact number, but it could be upwards of 300 communities on this type of a process. This is the best practice today, because it takes, you know, the subjectivity out of the process. And it's, do you meet the qualifications? You do, you're eligible to move forward. And then it's a random drawing. So the Community Development Director will also be the one now who's responsible for, well, he's, he's going to be the one who's going to say, okay, all these are eligible for the lottery. However, that will be with HDL's review and recommendations. They're not going to be based on, on his sole determinations. The reason it's set up that way, anybody who wishes to appeal, then will appeal to the city manager. So we have a process built in. So we've also made some changes to the ordinance to make sure that everybody has their due process through this, through the process. So the next steps after tonight would be a potential second reading. Should you adopt the ordinance tonight and approve these rules, that'll be on July 16. Also, on July 16, we'll bring forward adoption of application fees. So we have a fee schedule that we're working on developing that is going to, you know, for anybody who wishes to submit an application is going to have to pay fees for that. And then the application period, tentatively, as of tonight, we're looking at opening it on August 5, and that will run through November, I'm sorry, September 4. So I think with that, these are the recommendations before you. I do want to point out one thing that we are scratching tonight from the list of staff recommendations, the adoption of a resolution for application fee. And that's because they weren't ready for tonight, but they will be ready for the next hearing. For that, I'm available for questions. I believe we also have representatives of HDL. If you have any detailed questions for them, they're on the line. And we have community developments here as well who can represent.
Okay, we're going to take it out to the public unless HDL has any specific presentation.
Or just, just there to answer questions. Got it. Okay, we'll go out to the public. Anyone wishing to comment on the cannabis, first read, the cannabis licensing ordinance? Take chambers first. Anyone in chambers wishing to comment? Seeing none, we'll go to online. Let's see a few hands.
Thank you, Mayor Inga Lawrence and Decker.
Thank you, Sandra. Well, I've often said that I really have no faith in HDL. But then I've said it over and over at public meetings. I think that they, I am glad they revised their absolutely wild, outrageous projected income to the city from 300,000 to the city from three hundred thousand something, something to down to, hey, maybe fifty. I'm really glad they got it down to that. But they are pretty much a self-serving company. I don't have a particular problem with this ordinance as such. I mean, we, City of Pacific Grove is experienced with lotteries, aren't we? Until we finally did away with, in measure M, with the short-term vacation rentals. Yes, sometimes it takes a vote of the people. And this one, yes, we voted on getting it, and that's fine. I don't have any problem with that. I will still mail order my CBD product, products because no dispensary down here ever carries them. I was never against a cannabis store. It's just that I helped with that referendum because our previous city manager had botched the process so badly to try and get his little preferred candidate in. So as such, I have no problem with your particular ordinance, I don't think. And yes, I think it's a good idea to have a location with the application because that is a necessity, I think. I mean, before it was just like all this up in the air and oh, maybe. So I appreciate that. But as far as HDL, well, as I said before, I have no faith in that company. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mike Gibbs?
My counsel, Mike Gibbs, I've spoken on this issue before. I would just like to remind everybody that in the voter guide, two thousand and twenty-two, councilmember Paduri, councilmember Rao predicted about HDL, three hundred thousand dollars in revenue. We're not even going to be close to that. I feel we were misled into this decision. Second, I've talked to a lot of parents since this was voted in with kids, right? Talked to superintendent, the previous superintendent, and I couldn't find a single parent, not one. Well, I talked to twenty thirty that were in favor of this. And what they said to me is, this is not Pacific Grove. This is, this is, we're not that kind of city. We're a city of homes, we're a city of families. Let somebody else do that. So I really think that even the fifty thousand dollar number, if you do the math at six percent, that means sales of over eight hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars in sales. And everybody knows that there's a pot shop down in Lighthouse. Some of you may have been in there to check it out. And, you know, the turnover is pretty good, but we have competition. And so all of those things, I would just end with the number that I've given you before. But there's been a significant rise, especially since COVID, in young people of something called CIP, Cannabis Induced Psychosis. And in California, admissions of young people who have been screened for cannabis, who are experiencing psychosis and other severe mental problems is up thirty percent. Thirty percent. That's what we're bringing into Pacific Grove. That's what we're exposing our kids to. I got it that there was a, the city said, yeah, we should do it. City council still voted on it. And my last comment here is, is that we have enough data now from Colorado, California, other states. And generally speaking, the cost to the city versus the revenue is three to one. The cost is three times the revenue. And the city of Pacific Grove is facing some significant financial challenges. And they're not going to reverse themselves. And cannabis isn't going to fix it. And I think it just changes the nature of this great town that we all live in. But there we are. We're going forward with it. Our predictions were wrong before. They're going to be wrong again. Thank you very much.
Telephone member ending four three six.
Okay, so good evening, city council. My name is Eloise Shim. And I do agree with the previous speaker about the fact that having the cannabis in Pacific Grove wouldn't be a good idea. Neighboring towns like Monterey and Seaside and Marina and Salinas, they have dispensaries and the law enforcement have warned about problems. And since then, they've installed Narcan kiosks because of the dispensaries, the cannabis dispensaries. And also at the Monterey Board of Supervisors, the law enforcement found that many of the liquor stores in the area violate the laws prohibiting selling tobacco and flavored tobacco to youth. So the chance that the youth in PG will have more access to cannabis is high. And also they'll have more access to other drugs like fentanyl. And by the way, you have had many people, many youths die in Pacific Grove from fentanyl overdose. So having a dispensary will toxify PG's history and culture. And it's not too late to abandon the idea of a cannabis retail shop. Because I don't think that fifty thousand dollars a year is going to, that revenue is not worth for the well-being of the youth who could be harmed and whose lives could be taken as a result and other people as well, not only the youth. So you should really abandon the idea of a cannabis shop. Thank you.
No further hands are raised, Mayor.
Thank you very much. So we're going to go ahead and close public comment on this item. Would you like to come forward? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Melissa White, and I am a dispensary owner from Northern California. And we recently were able to open a dispensary in Monterey County as well. I just wanted to tell you guys that you will receive more than fifty thousand dollars in tax revenue. For instance, I'm an equity applicant, farmer, and shop owner. There's a program through the state of California, through the DCC, that you're entitled to three hundred thousand dollars for issuing equity licenses to build programs. We need to have spaces where CBD can be bought from a dispensary. It's tested. When you order CBD through online, it's not a tested product. Anything that comes through a dispensary is tested. And I think that people have this kind of misinterpretation that it's dangerous. Our clientele is fifty-five and older. That's what our clientele is. We live in a very conservative community. And we've never had any issues, no robberies, no anything. And we've been embraced by our community and our constituents to have that for them and available. So I think that you guys should look at the broad, I'm excited that you brought in a consulting agency. That's amazing for applicants like myself that you do have a standard thirty day timeline. Because we have to secure locations and leases, and you have to go through all these processes to even be able to submit for your license. So we do appreciate that you guys are looking at this again, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, there's not one more caller? I see a new caller.
Sarah Epperson?
Hello? Hi, can you hear me? Yes, I can hear you. Hi, can you hear me? Oh, sorry, there's a delay. I wanted to call in and talk about how we should have a dispensary in Pacific Grove. The voters voted on it. It's kind of ironic that it seems like the same people who want a referendum on the council pay are trying to shoot down something that the Pogrovians have voted on. I also know that it's a way for people to manage pain without using pharmaceuticals. It has nothing to do with fentanyl. It has nothing to do with Narcan. It's just really, really helpful for people that need it. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
We're going to close public comment on this matter. And I'm needing a break, so I'm calling a break right now. We'll come back to, when we come back, there will be no further public comment. We're going straight to council discussion on item eleven B. And we will also, after the break, finish item eleven C before going into closed session later tonight. So break until eight o'clock. Thank you very much.
Recording stopped.
Okay, I think we have all the players back here. Eight oh one. We're going to continue the regular meeting. We're on item 11B. We closed public comment and we're now at council discussion. Who would like to go first as to item 11B? My councilmember Dory.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, let me just say that in the context of cannabis interruptions are a buzzkill. But having said that, I wanted to ask a question. The, the, there were, at least in the agenda item, it was indicated that there was a 50,000 kind of revenue coming in from this item. I might have a two part question. One is, is that coming in from HDL? Number one. Number two is, I also want to know, we have, I would say historically budgeted $100,000 in our budget for cannabis related revenue. So why is this deferring from that amount? And is that this, is the 50,000 now going to be part of the budget process moving forward? Or is it going to remain at 100,000? So that's one question, maybe. I may have others depending on the, on the answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dory. So we didn't bring forward, I was going to say really quickly, a little bigger explanation of the money involved. We didn't bring forward the fees tonight. However, there will be a revenue with the fees itself, you know? So application fees are going to more than cover the HDL. There's also a staff component. And I think we are estimating those at probably about 60 to 70,000 for the year to, to permit the businesses. So that will be one revenue source. The other one is, is the ongoing cannabis revenue. And in our budget this year, we actually, because we, because, you know, we're being conservative, so we actually left it at zero for this year, just not, you know, knowing. Because even if you, if you permit one, well, if not of you, but if the city gets through the process of permitting a business, let's say, and, and late September or so, this could take them quite a bit of time to open up and get going. So it'll take us through the fiscal year. The number that's in the staff report was, was downgraded from the numbers that you've seen before. And, and really, there's no real science to that. I think it was more of, you know, we've heard overall the industry that there's more dispensaries than there was three years ago. So overall cities revenues have shrunk a little bit from the beginning. And I'll tell you, I was at a city in 2022 and we started doing this and we had three dispensaries. And I think our revenue the first year was about 450,000. So, but like I said, in the industry and in city environments, everybody's talking about it's not as high as it was. It is shrinking, but I think it's really, the 50,000 is a low conservative number, as kind of said in the staff report. We don't know until it's operating. It could be 100,000, it could be 150,000, you know? It's kind of hard to really say.
Okay, thank you for that. And I just, just from a process standpoint, right? Like there were three phases that were listed in here. Some, it looks like it's ending in September, just, I mean, if there are no extensions, et cetera. What do you think is like a more kind of logical kind of timeframe for a dispensary to be opened up in Pacific Grove? Is it 2026? Is it going to happen in 2026 at all or not?
I would, well, let's start with the, the application process. So if we were to close the application process, like we said, on the fourth, I believe HDL could probably do their review within 30 days and tell us, you know, who, who is a qualified ones. We'll have to have a short application appeal period. So let's say that takes us to the middle of October when we're ready to have a lottery. From that point, I would say it could easily take them three to four months to get through the planning process minimum. So you're probably looking at then that takes us to the beginning of next year. Then it depends on how much public or how much tenant improvements have to take place to the business. And I, I've probably an applicant who has done this before could tell you more detailed, but it's not like just moving into a tenant space. They have to put in all security systems. They have to, you know, there's quite a bit of changes that have to be made to the tenant space. So I think it's very easily going to be the end of next year before one is open and operating, but it could be sooner.
Okay, if it's going to be 26 rather than, well, I, I would just say that it's kind of high time to a problem of files, but the, the thing is that in this particular, taken three years to, to come up with this action, to move forward, and it looks like it's going to take another year. And meanwhile, Monterey already has a dispensary by Lighthouse that we were losing essentially revenue by being slow on this process. So whatever we can do to expedite. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Raw.
Thank you, everyone. I was just going to ask Mr. Mogensen, so it's fair to say that because of all of these delays, it did dilute our revenue?
Counselor, I, I guess what I would just say, based on the, the economic climate of cannabis business of 2022 to today, it probably was higher in 2022. So we, yeah.
And I think from my perspective, just to be clear, the fact that people still are calling up to say that we can just disregard the, the will of the voters is just the most undemocratic thing I've ever heard. And our voters overwhelmingly have approved cannabis on more than one occasion. And I think it's, oh, I was going to say it's high time, but I didn't want, I'm sorry. I'm going to vote yes, and just let's leave it at that.
Thank you. Councilmember Garfield, are you, did you ask? Oh, okay. McDonald, apologize.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I appreciate the details with which we've brought forward this process and really gone to the extent to make sure that we're, we're bringing in people who are well qualified, determining that they're well qualified first and having a really clear and transparent process. So I appreciate this, the city and the contractor for doing that. I did want to make a comment to the public comments about concerns with, with opioids and with the need for Narcan. And, and part of the, the point of the dispensary is this is a well researched project. So I'm sorry, I'm saying that wrong. So this is a well researched product. So when you're buying from a dispensary, you have assurances that you're getting a quality product that is not laced with the likes of fentanyl. So I, I don't think that it's the dispensary that would bring additional problems to the community as far as fentanyl and opioid overdoses and the need for Narcan. That comes from the on the street stuff that people may be getting that isn't so well regulated like that in a dispensary. And so this is something that was already decided on by the voters. And, and it was decided that the people of Pacific Grove wanted something local where they could shop and get their own revenue and their own tax revenue from the product. So we're kind of past that point in the process now. So what we're really looking at here is the ordinance and the fees. And so I really appreciate that they've gone to that detail. I did clarify one thing that I, I think we're going to potentially modify that just on like the processing of, you know, submitting a PDF version and then wet paper copies for those that are necessary. So I think they've done a really good job of making the guidelines clear and fair for all applicants. And so I appreciate the hard work that's been done to bring that forward to us.
Thank you. Here comes my walking stick. You ready?
Excellent, thank you. First, I want to thank HDL for, for helping us with this policy. And it's a very clear, it's well improved, it's, it's fair. From what I understand, they've worked on. And actually, I'll actually ask HDL directly. How many municipalities have you worked with doing the, or developing their, their cannabis?
Well, our client itself is, I would say, close to 300. Specifically narrowing it down to cannabis, the number is actually quite high. I would say 150 to 200. I don't have the specific number in front of me at the moment.
A ballpark works just fine. Thank you.
I was just going to, Councilmember, I was just going to say that the, the voice in the sky is Kristi LeRvald, and she's one of our representatives at HDL.
Thank you, because the, the detail in this, it shows that you've been working on this for a while, and I appreciate your expertise. So looking at this from a, a, a social point of view, we had 60% approved the, the measure, 40% disapproved the measure. I'm looking forward to a dispensary coming into the community and becoming a part of the community. And I would like that to, I would like to have, when a dispensary does come in, have them raise the bar and show the community what a high end dispensary can be. I don't want this to be a dividing topic in our community. I don't think it should be. I don't think it has to be. Although 40% voted against it, I believe that by showing people what this can be, we can win over a majority of those people. And that would help quell long-term resistance, not just resistance, but resentment and fights within the community. And I think it would help all of us to have a, a community that can be proud of this business and, and proud of it as an active community member with us. Anyway, I very much support the ordinance as written. And, and thank everyone involved for coming up with this. It's excellent. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you so much. We'll go to Mayor Proton Emilio, and then Councilmember Garfield after that.
Thank you. I have a question about the lottery. The, will, I guess if we, you know, fortunately, maybe we'll have a dozen or so trying to get into the lottery, you know? So how, how will that, how will they know it's going to be, I guess there'll be upfront, hey, this is going to be a lottery system. Am I correct, Mr. Mogensen?
Yeah, Councilmember, it'll be very open and transparent. There's going to be a webpage set up just for cannabis businesses. And when, when it comes time to make them aware of whether they're moving on or not moving on the process, they'll get official letters and other correspondence.
Okay, thank you. I originally was not for the cannabis, everybody knows that. However, I did say if the voters decided, I will support the voters on this. And I, I know you're talking, I know there's several reasons for location, but I've heard many times, location, location, location in Pacific Grove is probably going to be the key, where it's going to be, whether it's tucked away or somewhere where it's visible. And I am for the, I'm supportive of this.
Thank you, Councilmember Garfield.
Thank you. I want to underscore what a couple of other folks have said, is that this has been before the vote of the people multiple times. It's been consistent, strong support for a dispensary and, and for the use of cannabis. Unfortunately, as this has sometimes been slow walked or put to another vote or another study, it has caused people to develop their buying habits. And we've heard from one speaker today who buys her delivery because she already knows where she's going to go and she trusts that spot. And that has given us, we're lagging in, in setting up the ability to provide a local service for our local folks. And so I do think that that has eroded some of the value we would have gotten out of this had we been able to take action after maybe the second vote in, in favor of this. I would also like to ask that on section 11 dot 100 dot 150, consumption of cannabis talks about smoking and vaping of cannabis and cannabis products is prohibited in all public spaces and references California law. In the city of Pacific Grove, we have a smoking ordinance as well. And it is beyond that, is that you may not smoke or vape in an apartment unless you have a permission from your landlord. And you cannot be on a porch. There's a whole array of strictures against smoking to protect people who aren't smoking. And I'd like for us to reference that because that's the law here. I also got some questions and was able to get some reassurance. And the question was, if we're going to have a lottery, how do we know we're getting the best candidate? And was informed, and thank you, Mr. Mogensen, for walking me through it, is that the application process itself is quite rigorous and will assure that any candidate rising to the point of being able to participate in the lottery will be very well suited to be the shining example that councilmember walking stick was hoping we would get. So I think that that's something about, to know about the lottery is it's a final step in a rigorous process, not the first step in a rigorous process. So where can we reach people who are consuming vapable, smokable materials? And that's at the point of purchase. On the other hand, if we don't have the same guidelines and postings where cigarettes are sold, then it would seem to me to be uneven. And maybe I can come back to this issue at a later date when it's a level playing field across cigarettes and cannabis.
Go ahead, Mr. City Attorney.
I would like to just make a statement that the point that's being made by Councilmember Garfield, would probably be best to be put on a future agenda. And considering both these cigarettes, smoking and purchases and the whole issue that you've brought up here, I think that'd be best to come back at a future agenda.
Would it be more a level playing field? It may be even handed.
Understood.
For all points of sale.
There's just a lot, we're passing a lot tonight, so I think that's my concern.
That's fine. Thank you. I appreciate the side discussion about this. We'll get back to it, but I appreciate that. So I move that we hold the first reading of the amendment of the cannabis licensing ordinance.
May I interrupt for just a second? I'm sorry, sorry to do that. But I need to be requested to read the title of the ordinance before we start with the rest, so.
City Attorney, would you please read the title?
Yes, I'll be glad to. Thank you for asking. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacific Grove, amending chapter 11.100 to the Pacific Grove Municipal Code pertaining to commercial cannabis licensing. And then in order of efficiency, the next motion could be to approve all the recommended actions except for the resolution on the application fee.
So that would be three, four, and five?
Two, four, two through five.
Two, five.
Two through five.
Okay. I move that we waive the further reading of the ordinance, that we introduce and hold the first reading of the amendment to the cannabis licensing ordinance, that we direct that publication of the ordinance, will be satisfied by publication of a summary approved by the city attorney, and finally, adopt the resolution approving the application procedures and guidelines for storefront retail commercial cannabis business license.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have Emilio on the second. Any further discussion on the two through five? Okay, and those will be the only motions for tonight. And we'll go ahead and take a roll call on this.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Garfield, Mayor Protem Emilio, and Councilmembers Walking Stick.
Aye.
McDonald.
Aye.
Paduri. Rao.
Wow.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right. Thank you very much, everyone, for that. And we will take up our last item on the regular agenda before we go to adjourn the closed session. And that is going to be item 11C. It's like here. First reading of an ordinance repealing and replacing chapter 18.32.080 to adopt the 2025 Fire Hazard Severity Zone map. And I'll recognize Mr. Mogenson again.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to put on a fire hat for briefly here. And then, but I have a lot of help in the audience with us tonight. So here it comes. So the item before you tonight is, is, I guess you can almost draw a line from the fires in Southern California to where we are tonight. So Sandra, would you go to the next slide, please? The state of California, CAL FIRE, has released some updated local responsibility fire hazard severity zone maps. These were last adopted by the city in 2008. But with these new maps, we're required to go through the process again and codify these. So adopt these into our ordinance. The purpose of the maps is to indicate the potential hazard and, but not exactly the immediate risk. And it doesn't take into account the current mitigation efforts that are done, you know, throughout the city in maintaining defensible space and some of the fire protection work that our fire department is doing today. It also doesn't affect, these maps don't affect the way fire services are provided. These are just having to do with state law and standards in which properties are to be maintained in compliance with fire codes. So within the first 30 days, we did some posting that put this information out to the public and they had a comment period. Now we're getting close to the end of this 120 day period in which we're required to actually adopt these maps. Next slide, please. So the current requirements in Pacific Grove is that all parcels are to be maintaining their defensible space. That's per our fire code. We also, you know, have a very high, high, we also have current, like I mentioned, a fire hazard severity zone. And properties must comply with some of those more stringent defensible space standards as they are. And those are again prescribed by state law. We also last year adopted a wildland urban interface area. And that's within our community wildlife, our community, I think that's the wrong acronym. It's a wildfire prevention program on our local level that we adopted in concert with Monterey and with Carmel as well. So within those spaces, which is not applicable to what you're adopting tonight, we also have some of these standards that are in place already that are going to continue to be in place. Next slide. So as I mentioned, that the maps, you know, are updated. And what the result of this update is, is we currently, or we prior had 82 acres within the very high fire hazard severity zone. And that's going to 372 acres for all of our fire hazard severity zones. They've also now broken it down a little bit further. So there's this high zone, a moderate zone, and I'm sorry, should be very high, high and moderate. Should be the labels on those. So our highest there is 167 acres in the high, in the very high area, down to 141, the moderate. Next slide, please. This is what the current map looks like, and it might be hard to see the detail here. Fortunately, I don't have the current map to show you next to it. But as we mentioned before, you know, this is an additional bunch of acreage that is being adopted in the city. And we'll, on the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about what that means to any who's in that area today. So all properties within the area are going to, I think, immediately receive a defensible space inspection annually by our fire department. And they're going to advise on vegetation clearance, especially around structures and stuff. And in a second, I'm going to ask our division chief Cooper to come up and maybe talk a little bit more about that, what that inspection will look like. But as of, you know, today, I guess new construction, you know, they don't have, they only have to meet the codes as they were before. But the state is going through a process where they're going to update that even more. And then there's going to be this three year period where properties are in the very high area are going to have to come into conformance. Next slide, please. And with that is our staff recommendation. So I guess before we get to the full recommendations, I'll ask if Division Chief Cooper would like to augment.
Well, talked about. All right. We'll hear from Division Chief Cooper now.
Good evening. My name is Dustin Cooper, Division Chief of Monterey Fire Department. Thank you, council, Mr. Mayor, city staff, for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about fire hazard severity zones and what that means for us here in Pacific Grove. Currently, it's correct, all parcels in the city of Pacific Grove have to maintain defensible space. And what that means is basically up to your parcel line or your lot line, you have to maintain defensible space and not have overgrown weeds. We look at things like leaf litter up in the gutters. Because as that accumulates, it is a proponent to take fire and spread fire with embers and cause catastrophic losses for both structures and everything else. And what we've seen with some of the wildfires that are, that happened down south. So currently, we do have defensible space inspectors going around and starting in the very high fire hazard severity zones as identified by CAL FIRE before you in the map, which is that red color. And they're going door to door doing defensible space inspections. We've done these defensible space inspections in the past because we did have a very high fire hazards very zone in the past. However, with the new maps that are coming out, obviously, you see that zone has increased drastically before you, like it has in many of our cities and jurisdictions. The orange area that you see is the high fire hazard severity zone. That would be the next zone we would move to, to do inspections. And then we have a moderate fire hazard severity zone, which is yellow on that map. Now, it's important to note that, you know, if we do get a wildfire, it's not going to stop at a line on a map. And really, what this looks at for CAL FIRE is what they put together here is they take into account terrain, they take into account variable factors, wind direction. And this is more of an ember cast model of how far embers could travel into some of these zones. And then they come up with this color coding map. And that basically is replacing what we used to have. Now, does it add additional requirements in these zones? It's looking like that way. Yes, it will be. There's a lot of talk right now about the different zones, very high fire hazards very zone. If zone zero, which you guys have probably heard about already, is going to take effect, which is looking like maybe a January deadline of when it may take into effect. That means for all new construction, you would have certain requirements for defensible space and certain disclosures if you're selling homes in those spaces for both new and pre-existing construction. There's a three year phase in period like what our city manager has talked about. And we're out there today to educate people and tell people, you know, what are the requirements for that? So thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that update. That was really good. And I just want to clarify for the public before we take comment that this is, if you look at the map, and while I have Division Chief here and as well as Matt, when you look at the map, it's not the entire city that these zones are. These, this is, a lot of it is confined to Del Monte Park and the outlying areas next to Del Monte Park. Is that, is that correct?
I would concur with that, yeah.
Yes, the area that you don't see shaded is what's considered unzoned. It doesn't mean that there's not a wildfire risk or threat there. It just means based upon CAL FIRE State Board of Forestry's risk model that they use, or excuse me, with their, their model that they use to come up with this ember cast model, it came back as an unzoned area. Like I said, it does not mean that wildfire risk does not exist there.
Right. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it. Thank you very much, Mr. Cooper and Division Chief. And we're going to take it out to the public for comment. And if you don't mind sticking around if we have any questions. All right, thank you very much. So we'll go online for comments. Since only, we only have professional staff in the building, so at this point. Unless Chief Day would like to make a comment about fire? All right.
Mayor, I do not see any hands raised online for a public comment.
All right, we'll give it a second.
Okay.
All right, closed public comment. We'll go to Mayor Protem Emilio.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I fortunately live in the red zone. And I've heard a lot of comments from, obviously, I've been there for a while, over 12 years. I've heard a lot of comments from the community in that area. Couple of people visited my home because they know where I live. I have no, no issues with that. Oh, sorry. Okay, thank you. Okay, no. So anyway, I do live in the red zone. And I've had a lot of people, just to repeat, several people come and talk to me about it. And some of the questions come up is, for example, trees that are leaning in their property. One of the comments that I personally have is that if the fire department comes by and says, you've got to cut this tree down because it's too close to the house or it's hanging over the house, and they have to get a permit. I personally feel that the permit should be waived if they have to have the, the, this defensible area, which they're talking about. And also, I also have a couple of slides. And this isn't to get you. I'm not doing that. I'm just want to give you some information. And could you put up those slides? Now, these are pictures of trees that are down in a park, which are part of, to me, would be a fire hazard as soon as that weed's turned to, you know, golden color. And the next slide, please. Okay, now this is a shot from David Avenue. Part of those trees that are hanging, are in the red zone, are on city property and also Pebble Beach property. And I'll show you another slide. Or go with the next slide, Sandra, please. That's just another one. If you go ahead, yeah, four and then five. Okay, both these, there's another slide. Some of those trees are leaning where you see they're leaning on David Avenue, but many of them are part of Pebble Beach. So those trees are really in the red zone and they're leaning from Pebble Beach. How is Pebble Beach being formed of these trees? And someone's going to, apparently, that's a fire hazard. It's part of the red zone.
Yeah, some, some great questions. And thank you for bringing those questions up. And first off, let me rest assured, we're not telling homeowners out there to cut trees down. That's not what this is about. It's about taking a proactive approach of limbing trees up off the ground so that if we get a fire, we could go in there and put it out and we don't get the fire spreading up the trees into the canopies and we don't get what's called a crown fire where it spreads from one tree to the other and then to the houses. And then we have a house to house ignition spread like what we've seen in a lot of wildfires. As far as it goes for the vegetation management and what our defensible space inspection team does is they do go out and they talk to homeowners and educate them. Sometimes too, that's working with our city here to identify areas where we may need to do some tree work and thin out some of the trees and some of the brush that you saw, some of those pictures there, if it's on city property, just like what we would talk to residents about and tell them, hey, we need that brush pile moved and thinned out because that type of material promotes fire growth. If you look at some of the areas where we've done treatment areas and in the past, even cleaning and adding defensible space around lots and pushing whether it's 10 feet or 30 feet into an area to help basically prevent wildfire spread, that's a lot of what our prevention team does when they go out there, boots on the ground and looking at these areas and coming up with so-called treatment plan. And we're working closely with the Public Works Director and Public Works Crew and also the city forester as we talk about this stuff. Because it is true, if you have a tree that's overhanging your chimney, the current code and laws is that tree has to be 10, that tree limb has to be cut 10 feet back. But if it's going to damage the tree and cause the tree to die, we have to look at all those factors. And we work with, like I said, the city forester. We could be working with the property owners on what is the correct mitigation for a lot of that stuff. So it's not a one size fits all. But we do have issues with trees across all of our jurisdictions that we know about. And we're handling those as we can with kind of combination of city staff and then also how, with funding, what's allowed with funding.
Okay, well, thank you. One of the slides showed the trees on David Avenue that are leaning over. Some of them are in city property, are on the right side. And then some of them are on the Pebble Beach side coming all the way over to David Avenue. How do, how does Pebble Beach, how are they going to get resolved? How are they going to resolve those issues?
Yes, the other part of that question, Pebble Beach, we do work with Pebble Beach, which is CAL FIRE. Department of Forestry CAL FIRE is very receptive to when we talk and engage with them on clearance of different stuff. They've worked with us many times and providing hand crews into areas to help clean areas such as some of the dog walking parks that we have and to mitigate those issues. When we do have those tree issues, we will engage with Pebble Beach Community Services District and CAL FIRE on ways to help clean up some of those areas. And it's mainly, like I said, those ladder fuels that spread up, up into the trees that could cause a fire to run.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
For Councilmember Rao.
Thank you. So in that one slide that Councilmember Emilio showed, the trees are leaning onto a fence. Now, that to me just looks like a recipe for disaster.
Yeah, so typically, when we have trees that are leaning, it still could be a very healthy tree and there's, it's not subject to falling. That's where we get the forestry, the forest, the forester involved to come out and assess that and assess the risk of that tree and see if it's healthy and if it's fine. Like I said, our intention is to remove the ladder fuel so it doesn't spread up the tree versus cutting trees down. Now, if there's trees where it's blocking our access of getting fire apparatus into an area and it's totally coming across the street, there's things that we have to do to limit up to make sure we have emergency access to get to areas that we need to with the fire engines.
So the resolution for that is to bring the tree up so that it's no longer?
Correct. And you do see that happening currently with certain, you know, PG&E will go and trim around their wires. Now, you know, the DSS are on wires for that. We do come across some of those things. We do try to work with PG&E too, to go, hey, you know, this is a fire hazard where we're seeing issues and do basically what we do when we work with any of our partners to try to get resolution on, on something that may be a hazard in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. So just to- Thank you. So just to bring the council back in on what we're actually doing. So here, the CAL FIRE has released maps. We're being asked to adopt the maps under the government code. We obviously have some very capable fire experts around to help us with my, with other issues that arise, but tonight what we're doing is adopting the maps. So at this time, if there's no debate about the maps, I would entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance so we can get rolling on that. And if there's other fire questions and things of that nature, then we can bring them up in discussion or at other times. Yes.
I, I have a next steps question.
Okay.
So we're hearing that there are a lot of new changes coming. And I'm wondering, as we get to, as things roll in and we're getting, you talked about three years to bring things up to speed. What are we gonna be doing in the city on several things that we control? What's our permitting process? How are we gonna address different materials? We've heard people talk about the difficulty in getting fireproof roofing materials approved for a roof replacement, landscaping recommendations, and our tree ordinance. How are we gonna get all that to incorporate the sort of new standards that we're hearing about? I guess, Mr. Mogenson, I'm looking at you. Let me reframe that. We're gonna have to get, we're gonna have to go through our ordinances, our practices, our recommendations, and, and make sure that, that what we're telling people or requiring people to do is matching the newest requirements so that the city can be the best neighbor we can be as well as enabling people to make good choices and good decisions. So I would expect to see some of this coming through from staff as we change things, and maybe some of our, our boards and commissions can be actively participating in, in incorporating these, these new recognitions.
I do, I think that's a relevant question, given that these maps are gonna create activity that needs to happen. So can you speak to that at all, Division Chief?
Yes, I could tell you, city of Pacific Grove is not alone. You know, all of our cities in, in our geographical footprint, especially the, the ones that we have response to, have to do change some of their rules and ordinances to allow for certain things. Whether it's gravel coming up to your house, because you can't have wood chips all the way up to your house in a very high fire hazards very zone after it's phased in. You can't have combustible material, because what we find is that fire spreads and runs up to the side of the house and then catches the house on fire. Certain areas are gonna have to change in cities charter and, and codes and ordinances to reflect building materials, and those building materials, the good thing about it is, is they're not vetted by us, they're being vetted by the state. The Department of Forestry is vetting all those materials that are approved in the very high fire hazard severity zone even right now for new construction, which might include ember-resistant vents, non-combustible siding, non-combustible roofs. That's all being vetted, and, and there's an approved list out there on the state of California's CAL FIRE's website that has that. And really what it shows too is for new construction going into an area of a lot that might be in a very high fire hazard severity zone, you already have to meet the wildland urban interface standards for building under 7A, which is the building code that it refers to. When they build those buildings, what CAL FIRE has found, and you could go online on their, their website, but with the wildfire, they actually show a house that has adopted those standards and one that hasn't. And what you do see when they put fans in front of it with embers that the house that hasn't adopted the standards catches fire and burns down to the ground versus the one that's adopted the standard survives. And that survivability rate for CAL FIRE is between 40 and 50% if everything's been adopted for that house in the very high fire hazard severity zones. So, so to, to answer that question, there, you know, much, there's gonna be changes coming, and we all know that. And we're here to educate homeowners and help them with that process.
That's great. Thank you so much.
You might could, you know, maybe ask a quick clarifying question, but also, and I also heard Councilmember Emilio talk about, you know, fees for when you're required to do tree trimming. So I think there are things like that. We will need to come back and discuss in context of our zoning codes and other, our tree ordinance and things like that. However, we're in, I believe, the building code and fire codes get renewed this year. And I would imagine much of this will be implemented through that.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
All right. Well, would anyone be interested in making a motion? Mr. Councilmember McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. So can we please ask the city attorney to read the ordinance, please, the title?
Yes, yes, do that. It's ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacific Grove repealing and replacing PGMC. It says chapter, and it should say section, so we'll make that change. To adopt the 2025 fire hazard severity map for the city as identified by the California State Marshal in accordance with Government Code Section 51178. And then for the remaining items on the agenda, the motion could be to move the, the remaining recommended actions.
Okay, I move to move the remaining recommended actions.
Second. Any further discussion?
Councilmember McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Walking Stick?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmembers Paduri? Rao? And Garfield? Motion carries seven two.
Thank you very much. We're here. A lot of topics tonight.
So, Mayor?
Yep.
Mayor?
Did you want me to announce the closed session?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just gonna say one thing. Thank you, Monterey Fire, for being here, and, and thank you. That was excellent. Well done, very well done. I know we're in good hands and we're going to, you know, we're gonna keep working through all these changes as we, you know, deal with climate issues and fires and wildfires and trees, and we're always gonna protect our trees in the community. So we appreciate the mindset that you bring. Thanks so much for coming. And I'll now recognize City Attorney.
We have, our last item is a closed session. Conference with labor negotiators. That's authorized by Government Code Section 54957.6. The city designated representative is the city attorney. The employee is the city manager. And you should now ask for public comment.
Oh, yes. So at this time, we'll take public comment on the Conference Labor Negotiators, city manager is the employee, 15A. And there's no one in chambers. Is there anyone online who should comment on that item?
See any hands raised online, Mayor?
Go ahead and close public comment, and we will adjourn to closed session at this time, and we will not be returning right.
We, we can adjourn in closed session.
Okay.